Thank you all for being here. Some of you know my mom's funeral was yesterday, so I apologize for not being able to be with you this evening. But I'm here for now. And the, let me, let me start by reading our script. So the time, current time is 6:02 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum attending both in person and on a video conference. Notice that this meeting has been posted online and at the Fort Bend ISD Administration Building for at least seventy-two hours. This meeting is being livestreamed to the district's YouTube channel, and a recording of this meeting will be uploaded to the district's webpage following the conclusion of our meeting. So once again, I'm sorry I can't be with you all in person this evening. I understand that we do not have any closed session items this evening as well, and so we will proceed to open session. I do have one request is, and that is that we, if everyone is agreeable, that we move Agenda Item 7A1, which is the possible revisions to our superintendent search timeline to be our first order of business. As I am here with family, unfortunately, I am going to leave after that discussion, and we'll follow up with Ms. Saibadra and watch the video for anything that I may have missed. And I have asked Mr. Rice to preside over the meeting, and as it will be much more efficient for him to do that than than I from a distance. So, Mr. Rice, I will yield the floor to you unless anyone has any objections.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Hearing none, I will move to consider Action Item 7A1 as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Jim Rice and a second by Ms. Hannan. And I will start off on this by saying that I'm the one who asked Mr. Rosenthal to place this on the board agenda, and I'll state my reasons for that at this time, and then, of course, entertain any conversation regarding it. This month is a very challenging month for me. In addition to SLI, I've got to go to SLI in San Antonio and also in Fort Worth to discharge my duties as the TASB president. And in addition to that, I am chairing the TASB search for a new executive director, and I have some personal issues going on at home with, related to my wife's health. So I thought it would be, for me personally, and also for the board, an opportunity, especially in light of the fact that we have two new trustees, to attend SLI together and even CRSS together in order to have training together, and then take an opportunity, following that, to revisit our core commitments and beliefs since our two new trustees haven't had an opportunity to review those and have discussion on them. So that's the reason that I asked Mr. Rosenthal to put it on the agenda. And I will stop right now and entertain comments from anyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I know that there was a little bit of a conversation that came up during our team building, and the board attorney stopped the conversation regarding the possible postponement of the superintendent search. And I would just, I recognize what a busy gentleman you are, Mr. Rice, and I appreciate your work at TASB, but I would like to recommend that we continue with this search as we are voted on by constituents that, that hope that we, we go on with business as long as we can have a quorum involved. And I think that the voters, even though we've got new, new board members, have faith in, in their decision-making, and that's why they are here. I know on November sixteenth, Dr. Dupree announced that he was retiring, so we've known for a very good, long while, in my opinion, that we needed to have a superintendent search. And then I know that this item was postponed. I know that we were supposed to meet with Hazard Young and Associates on Saturday, June seventh, and, you know, it's my feeling that we, we did vote on the calendar as HYA spelled that out for us, and there was also supposed to be some information that we worked on today. So it seems as if we've already postponed something that was voted on by the board and agreed on a calendar. So it is my opinion that we continue with the superintendent search as planned. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Dr. Gilliam?
And good, good evening. I am in agreement with Ms. Hannan. We've been here for seven months. I do understand that we have two new board members, but they are very intelligent, and I believe that they can catch up if they would, if they would want to, and I'm sure that that would happen. It was June the fifth, on Saturday, that we decided not to meet, and I'm thinking, not really understanding why that did not happen. If we were going to actually receive, I was encouraged by it and excited by it because we were supposed to receive names on that date. I think that in, in looking at where we are in June, there are many, many things that, that come into play, and there are things, when we postpone this, that we've already gone through seven months, that we may be missing some candidates. And if, I, I believe that it, it doesn't necessarily show that we are a board that means business in my, in my mind. It seems that we're indecisive, and I believe that we need to move forward, if we need to edit as we go, but as far as just stopping and saying, okay, let's just wait until we catch up a bit. It's right after the pandemic. We've got a lot of things going on, and we need a superintendent. And I would much rather have a superintendent coming in the fall than rather coming in the spring. And I believe we owe that to the community.
Hi. I am very new on the board. I'm still learning my, my ways around, and I, I agree, we do need a superintendent. And we met, me and Christian, we met with the search firm to try to catch up, to understand the profile for the new superintendent. By that time, we talked about the calendar, and because the, the board, before we got on, they already had a tentative calendar. And then to accommodate, you know, myself and the Christians' calendar, we did have discussion, and we, we did agree on the calendar. But after that, we had a team building. During the team building, I, I learned one thing. I feel it is important for the board to be together, to understand each other more, and to understand what kind of candidate we're looking for, for Fort Bend ISD. So Fort Bend ISD is still very attractive ISD. I believe there are a lot of good candidate wanted to come and join us. At the same time, I do believe it is, will be very beneficial if we can come up as a board, as a whole team, together on the same page, to present what our goal, our, you know, as a district, to the candidate, and then confident the candidate, we're going to work together, we're going to support the superintendent, and then to have a best candidate. So doing, because of that, I do think, just for, to me, I feel it will be beneficial if we have a little bit more time. Thank you.
Ms. Malone?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rice. Yeah, so it's, to reiterate what Judy was saying, she's correct with HYA and meeting with them, as far as the calendar went, and it felt like a very condensed timetable and rushed. And coming from the business sector, in this type of role, I don't think we would rush a decision. And it makes sense to me, there's time, and there's cost and quality. And I do believe we owe our community to choose and select the right superintendent, and part of that is taking the time to do so, to make sure we are a cohesive group. After doing the team building, it became extremely clear to me that the greatest priority is to make sure that we are united as such, so that we can represent the community as one FBISD. With that being said, we need to make sure that first, we are united, then we can add that super to our team to reflect what we believe. But we haven't had the time to even know what we all believe and how we want to proceed with, with our core commitments and beliefs, as you initially stated. And I think it's imperative that we know what our vision is and what our commitments are to each other and to the community. And in selecting the leader to guide all of the admin, staff, and students, I do think we could proceed, but I do think the process is very condensed, and we should elongate it a bit, that it's way too fast and too heavy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Rice?
Oh, Mr. Rosenthal?
That's okay. Danica can speak.
All right.
No, I would prefer if you spoke first, Day.
Okay. So, thank you all for your comments. I appreciate everyone's, one's view on this. It's a difficult decision. I think there's several things. First of all, the schedule as, that we presented is basically an impossible schedule. And the reason we could not meet Saturday was because I could not meet Saturday, because there was no way for me to plan when things were going to happen for me and my mom. And so that is why. I could not have met online, I could not have met in person. So you would have interviewed candidates without me, which I don't think is the right thing to do. Mr. Rice's schedule is compacted, everyone's schedule is compacted because of SLI, and then the district shuts down at the end of June, first of July, and then people start going away on vacation. And so to, to rush through a superintendent search, having meetings on Saturdays and Sundays, I think is unprecedented, and I, and I really think that shows that we really don't mean business because we're trying to rush it through. And I think that most people would, would see us as a much more mature board, having, going, are going through continued training at SLI and at CRSS, and continued sessions with Kathy Minsberg, just as we did nine years ago. As I brought up at our training session with Dr. Minsberg last week, this board is in a very similar position, because we have five new board members, or five board members with less than a year experience, much like we did in 2012. In 2012, the board started to come together. We met very often and regularly with Dr. Minsberg. We defined those core commitments and beliefs. We, we came up with missions and visions, and, and we, we learned our role as a board, as a collectively as a board. And it was probably five months later when we started the search, when, where we ended up with, with Dr. Dupree. And so it was a five-month process of going through training. And I think that's what's necessary at this point. And I actually spoke to HYA about that, and, and they actually watched our training session, and they thought it was a, it was really an amazing start to a board trying to come together. And I think what we discussed was that superintendent candidates who would watch that meeting would say, wow, this board is really going to try to work hard to define itself, to divine its priorities, just priorities, to define its initiatives, and to come together to see what they want to, to, what Fort Bend ISD to look like. And then, as, as Dr. Minsberg had said, when the subject came up, is that then we kind of have a better idea of what we're shopping for, and I'm paraphrasing her. But so I think that is, that is a much more mature approach to this process, and I think delaying, not postponing, delaying the search is, would, shows that we're being much more proactive and intentional. And so I, I am for delaying the search for those reasons listed.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Williams?
November sixteenth, 2020, Dr. Charles Dupree decided to resign with five to six years remaining on his contract. He wasn't fired, he just decided to just get up and go because he didn't like the fact that we had new board members. At such time, you had three. You talk about you, the addition of two new board members. At that time, we had three, yet you guys still chose to proceed with electing, I mean, you, you chose to continue with the superintendent search firm. So if it wasn't a problem when you added three, how is it now a problem for you to add two? Furthermore, if you look at the makeup of the board, all of us have some type of management experience, and we know what it looked like. So we don't all have to agree on the same qualities, but one thing we should agree on is that our students deserve for us to keep our word. They need a superintendent. We need to add stability to the board, and if we talk about the great job you guys done five, nine years ago with going out and getting Charles Dupree, I would look at that and say, it probably wasn't such a good job, when you have five years remaining on your contract, and you turn your back on the students and the parents because you don't like the idea of three new board of, I mean, three new trustees coming on board. So I think that we have a great team of trustees. I think we should proceed as we promised the community. We didn't leave Charles. Charles left us, and at that point, our students deserve to have a permanent superintendent. So I'm going to stick with the class of 2020 and state that we need to do exactly what we told the public we were going to do.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have any other comments? Dr. Gilliam?
And thank you, Ms. Williams. I'm in total agreement. I heard a few words, and one of the words was maturity. And maturity is doing those things that are hard. And we are at a point where we have just finished a pandemic, and we are now going to take time, which I have yet to hear, if we're extending this by three months, four months, six months, or a year. I am not in agreement with this. I think there's a lot of personal opinion that is happening, and I totally agree with what Ms. Williams said. It was totally, and I would not have, have said this, Ms. Williams, and I, I thank you for the words. It was totally okay for us to begin a superintendent search on November the sixteenth, when we weren't even sworn in. And yet now, we're consistently referred to as new board members, which we are not. We all have management or upper-level management experience. We understand when we go, I, I find it different that, as adults and being board members, that we wouldn't know if we're going too fast. And when we talk about 2012, I really hope that's the last time that we are compared with 2012, because we are in 2021. We have a lot of experience on this board, we have a lot of know-how, and as far as getting along, anyone that has been in a boardroom knows that when you go in that boardroom, you go in there to make decisions, you don't go in there to make friends. And I am serious about what it is that I'm doing. As sitting here for seven months and waiting for things to happen, it is not appropriate. We're rushing? No, we're not rushing. We are in 2021. We are in 2021. We understand that there are a lot of different things that are going on in, in Fort Ben ISD. And I understand, I'm going to speak for Shirley. We need a leader. And we need someone that we know, that we can count on and that we're going to be able to adhere to policy and be able to make decisions and not wait another year and blame it on the pandemic. To me, that's what's necessary. Again, 2012, nine years ago, another board, HYA, whatever training that we go through, I'm going to say, uh, Ms. Williams, Ms. Hannan and I have been through team building and we are going through team building again. I, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with going through a second session of team building and yet I've learned nothing to where I can't even find out the names of the superintendent that we were supposed to find out on Saturday. Why did this decision have to be made now? How about us coming through and seeing what we have actually on the board? Then we can actually sit down and see, hmm, well, maybe we do need to take some time. We all have things to do. But when I decided to run for the, the school board, this was going to be first on my list. We are all professionals. We know. We are not rushing anything. If we go through, if, if what we have on the schedule that someone put together by themselves or with others that we didn't see, if we need to make adjustments, we make adjustments. And I think the next thing, I, I see Ms. Hannan has a, a question and I, I'm going to stop there because there may be something that, uh, she's going to say that I would have said. But I am very prepared to do what I need to do when it comes down to a superintendent, when it comes down to, to listening and learning and making the time to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliam. Uh, Ms. Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I just want to follow up with Ms. Williams and, uh, Dr. Gilliam because I, I want to make it clear, um, to, to our community that might be listening and to, um, uh, Ms. Day and Ms. Malone, that the calendar and the packet from HYA, we voted on this unanimously to approve, uh, what was in here, which included, um, a summary of, uh, takeaway items from an agenda that we worked on, uh, how the online survey was going to go, um, how the number of candidates and the internal candidates and all of this and how it was going to play out. And part of that, we, we had a search calendar and we, and it wasn't tentative. While it does read, the board agreed to the following calendar with the possibility of modifications later in the search. But what is my understanding is the search has commenced and there are people who have put their names forward, um, and, and, and because they want to come here. They want to come here. And I'm under, I, I'm, I'm assuming that Hazard, um, Young and Ateya hasn't told us that they have inadequate candidates. I'm assuming that the candidates that they brought forward are high-quality candidates. And so one of my concerns is those candidates will withdraw because they need, you know, I'm sure they need to continue on with, with, uh, their career and, and their job wherever they might be right now. And so I, I feel like that I, 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 I'm having difficulty thinking about voting on this action item because you're bringing me something with no new timeline. I don't know what the postponement means. Um, is that a month? We, you know, I, I just don't know. And so that's really hard for me to say, let's postpone it because I don't know how long that takes us into the future. Anyway, I really, I don't want to disrespect the candidates that have already, um, put their application in. And I do agree with Dr. Gilliam that we have a, a lot of people up here, whether we are new or not, that we are all highly qualified and committed and passionate to serve this district and to get a new leader in, uh, in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannan. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Day.
First, I want to thank to Ms. Hannan and to make it clear, like, I didn't, actually, I wasn't aware the calendar was voted, um, by the board. I did, I didn't, when we had a discussion with the search form, I was under, I, I know you all agreed on the calendar. And so we tried to keep the original calendar and just to make sure, uh, Ms. Malone and myself were, uh, available. There's one, uh, just one comment I wanted to make, uh, during my camp, campaign. Many times, uh, I remind myself, uh, the Board of Trustee is not representative, is the trustee. So our responsibility to, is to do what's the best for the student, for all the students. Uh, that being said, uh, I know we, we told the community, we're going to do the superintendent search as soon as possible or we have the calendar. I just feel at this moment, what's the best, uh, for all the students, for all the staff, um, is to search a great, great superintendent who are willing to invest in Fort Ben ISD for long-term, who will do a great job. In all, in order to, to reach that goal, we need to set a clear goal ourselves, uh, the vision. I'm, I'm, we are all very capable and, um, at least I, I hope we're all like, you know, um, capable. I think everybody sitting here are elected, we're all capable and we are committed to, to do our best. Because of that, um, I've, I don't want to rush. I wanted to, and I agree. I think it's better to vote on something we have, uh, a new timeline. I think maybe that makes sense. I mean, that makes a lot of sense. Ms. Hannan, I do agree with you on that. Uh, it's difficult for me to just to say postpone, um, but without some, you know, new proposal. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. I'll just say, uh, I appreciate everyone's comments here this evening. And we may have differing points of view. I think we all have the same goal, which is to hire the best candidate that we can to lead the school district. If it, if, but I think that we should take action to vote on this, uh, with the idea that, uh, we would bring Hazard, Young, and Ateya here next week, uh, with their calendar and a proposed calendar that we could all agree on going forward. So if, are there any other questions at, or comments at this time? Yes, Ms. Williams?
Okay. I would like to end with this. Fort Ben ISD is a district with over 42% low socioeconomic students. COVID has just been horrendous to that population. And for us to delay this any further, I've been sitting here for seven months. I have not done a thing to assist those students. All we've talked about, every agenda has always been either focused on vendors or we've been, uh, focused on the superintendent search. I have not had an opportunity to do what I do best, and that is to assist underserved communities. Uh, delaying this search another week is going to be too long for me. Everybody should get in where they fit in. We need action now. Those kids, those family, especially our Spade students, we need action. We need to get a superintendent, something new, somebody new, who understands the importance of following and abiding by our federal and state education laws as well as board policy. That didn't happen in 2012. And if anyone is under the assumption that, uh, extending this another month, another two, we're going to get, um, similar to what you guys got in, uh, 2012. We need to get together, make a decision, get a new leader because that 42% of underserved students is in need of immediate assistance, not another, uh, bender-feeding, uh, procrastinating board. I'm here to do work and I want to do work and I believe in every one of you guys, especially Dave. You know, I ran with Dave in 2012. So, I mean, I, like I stated, when I, um, uh, when I voted for him for president, I think Dave is just a wonderful guy. The same with Jim. I respect and admire his business sense. But my passion is to go in and help the underserved. And all I'm asking is that it not be delayed, you know, for something that's not urgent. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Yes, Ms. Malone?
I don't know if it's possible to get clarity on the timetable, but I think that's, um, it's been pretty unanimous that the timetable is of concern as far as what this delay looks like. And I think identifying that and, um, adjusting it such so that we can agree, because it's not, my support is not a one-year timetable. I'm thinking a few months. So that we have the opportunity, um, SLI is going to be a game changer for us as far as time spent together, but I don't see a need to delay seeing who the actual candidates are. Is there any way we can define this? Or is it, is that a possibility, I guess, would be my question? Is there something we can do to define it so that everyone could set easy with a slight delay, not an unknown delay?
Well, we have a calendar right now. I, I'm proposing that we change this calendar. If we vote to change the calendar, we'll find out what it would be next week. If we don't vote to change it, then we, we already know what the calendar is. Ms. Hannan, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Rice. So I understand that you are incredibly busy and many of us are incredibly busy. And we found it so important, I know you can't change your schedule, but we changed our schedules so that we could follow this calendar. And we, we can proceed with the vote, but I, I again go back, I cannot vote to postpone a calendar that I do not know the timeline. And so I hear you saying, we'll do it next week, but so that, so that postpones it another week before we even finalize. And I'm actually not okay with, with two months out. That puts us, that puts us searching at, uh, school startup time when superintendents throughout the country are rallying their, their staff and they're cheerleading their own communities. And I think that that is a challenge for someone, uh, to be applying for a high-stakes leadership job in a district of 78,000 children. I think now as you're closing up a pandemic year, we, I, I, I am under the assumption that Hazard, Young, and Ateya is sitting with the at least five or six candidates that we agreed on, uh, in the item that we all voted unanimously on. So I'm assuming those candidates are waiting and I sure hope, you know, we don't lose those candidates because to me, we're disrespecting the candidates. We have had postings for the last month, month and a half, I believe, um, in various places and their, uh, recruiting, um, has been happening over the last month and a half, and then we put an abrupt stop. I, I am just, um, I'm, I'm very concerned. Um, I understand Mr. Rice's, uh, request because of, of TASB. I understand that some board members believe that the team building through SLI and, um, CRSS is going to, to provide some clarity and insight. Um, I think, you know, I, I think we will learn some things for sure. Um, but again, uh, it does concern me that a board unanimously voted on an item, uh, that was, and I understand, Mr. Rosenthal, and I'm sorry for your loss, but we postponed something that a board had unanimously, we already postponed it, that a board had unanimously voted on. And we act as a body corporate, we act as a body corporate. We cannot make decisions on postponement alone.
Thank you, Ms. Hannan. Dr. Gilliam?
So I'll just ask the question straight out. Is there a way that we could see now who HYA has? Can we meet? Can we do a virtual meeting? Before, and I'm with Ms. Hannan, before we decide that we're going, we're, we're going for a postponement and we don't know when that is, we don't know what they have. And it's something that was recommended, that was brought up in open session and I believe we were, um, advised to stop talking about it. And then we're here now and, um, I need to be quiet so I can see if the question can be answered.
So I might be able to shed some light on that. I actually spoke to HYA about that and they would not recommend doing that because of the confidentiality and the fact that they're, because there, there may be a chance that this search be delayed, that they would not have permission from several of the candidates to reveal their names. And I want to, I want to make some comments on some other things that were said. So, uh, as far as the timing goes, I don't think anybody's thinking that this is going to last until next spring. Um, I know that would be not, not be my intention at all. The other thing is, I, and I could be wrong here, but I look back, um, and the dates that we initially voted on, I think are long past. And so as far as this thing taking so much time, you know, I can't explain why, I believe in February, we actually picked a superintendent search firm. Um, and here we are. We still don't have candidates. So I don't know why that, that delay initially happened. I think had that gone as planned, um, that we wouldn't be having this conversation. But the other thing as far as potentially losing candidates, we could also be potentially gaining candidates because at this late date, and again, we won't, even at the schedule, the, the schedule that we, that we had just planned out, we would not be naming the finalist. I think it was till July 1st or something like that. And so you'd be looking at a superintendent that wouldn't even, that, that would, that would have to wait till, um, what, 21 days after that to find out that they would be leaving their current situation as right at the beginning of school. And I don't know, I, we say that we might be losing people because candidates might not want to be interviewing at the beginning of school, but they may not want to leave right at the beginning of school either. So I think that's a wash. I mean, that, that could go either way for us. So I, I really don't think that that's, that's an issue that we could gain some good candidates. We could lose candidates. I don't know. So again, my thoughts are on this is that this could be one to three-month delay. That's just my thought, uh, but no more than that. And perhaps we could have someone, uh, late fall, named late fall and be ready to start in January. That's just my thought. So, um, I don't know if that really answers because I can't speak for everybody, so.
Well, if I can, I, I believe, um, you were answering my question. So we're looking at January now? Is that what I heard? It actually could be January?
Ms., Dr. Gillian, that's, that's just my thought. Okay, so we're, we together are not looking at any dates right now. That's just, that's just me, Dave Rosenthal, individual board member, saying that. That's, that's what I would envision. So again, because somebody, somebody brought up that this could, it may not happen till next spring. I don't, I don't know who said that, but I, I, I would not envision that. But, um, you know, that's, again, that's just me talking. I, nobody, nobody can really answer your question. The, the question on releasing names of candidates, I did ask that question. And it would, they would, they would advise against, the search firm would advise against that because of confidentiality.
And, um, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. But of course, when I refer to you, you are the president of the school board, so I'm expecting a solid answer. Uh, but I do understand that you can't give one. I, I understand.
I cannot, I cannot give.
I understand. Okay. So what I also understand is we really don't have an idea of when this can actually happen. Uh, one to three months, we're talking, uh, January came out. And I, I would just really, you know, when we're talking about rushing and we're talking about, we're basically talking that we cannot do this at this time. And I really don't understand why we can't do it. I don't. If there's seven I don't. If there are seven of us here and five of us are, if we have a majority, I believe that we can move on. So it's extremely disheartening to me right now. And it's disheartening because there are so many people that are out there, the people that we were elected by, the people of Fort Ben ISD, parents and teachers and principals and different things when we are hiring people and people not getting jobs because they're just waiting for the next person to come in. There is a lot of things that are in the background that there's a reason why we need a new leader. And so and I have been here in Fort Ben. And I am I'm I'm sitting here and I'm I'm hearing that possibly because we just don't have the know-how right now. It I don't think this is about time. I think this when again, and I'm going to say I think this is about relationships. And we put relationships aside and we do what we need to do for the community, period. And we come here and we whatever that that calendar has, that's what we adopted. And how dare we decide that we're just going to change in midstream? And I'm going to be quiet.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. Ms. Hannon?
This will be my last comment. The the calendar that we we voted on put other things into effect. And we we selected Ms. Saavedra as acting superintendent. And there are other implications involved. I think if we had known, you know, because for some reason we all agreed on this, and I agreed on it and still do, then then perhaps the the choice of an interim superintendent or we there are there are other ramifications that that go along with this. And so I just I'm going to ask this board, as we vote for for things in the future that impact our staff and impact our students, that you look very carefully because this is a big deal. This is a big deal to our community and to our kids. Look very carefully at what you're voting on. And if it's a timeline and your plate is too full, then maybe you need to vote against it. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon.
I just have one more. Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
Make one more comment. So first of all, I don't remember actually voting on the current timeline that that had a board meeting on this past Saturday. And this meeting here, because this meeting was originally going to be they were going to roll out candidates and we were going to have all kinds of discussions. I want to say, again, I don't I don't remember that. So I think the original timeline had us well into like interviews by now. And it just didn't happen. I don't know what, like I said, I don't know why it didn't happen. I don't know why it took months after we selected superintendent for search firm for us to even start talking about a timeline. So I don't know. But you're right. It is very important to the community. It's very important to our staff and students. And and but here we are. Okay, we have basically 23 days to pick a superintendent. And being at SLI and everything else that's going on, I think it's rushing it. You know, call it what you wish. I believe that we're rushing it. And I think that that we could do a much better job if this were this were delayed a bit. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Yes, Ms. Day?
I just want to I just want to I don't know the calendar, the previous board voted on, but I do know the June 5th, the one we're supposed to meet on Saturday, was the new date we came up with at the, you know, the meeting. So I just want to make that clear. Another thing I wanted to make, I wanted to just to confirm. I believe we are not voting to definitely delay this superintendent search into January or spring. I thought today, probably based on what Ms. Rice just said, I my understanding is we're just voting on with the possibility to change the calendar. And then the search form will come back next week to give us more information, like what new timetable going to be look like. Another thing I wanted to to say is I've been working with a lot of admin staff in Fort Ben ISD, and I had a pleasure. I met the E-team just last week. I really I impressed with their, the way they can handle things. I trust them. And I believe they're with their experience. And I do believe they can make things happen for the students when we search for the right person. That's that's just my my those reasons. It's the reasons I think we shouldn't rush. 23 days to to make a decision on a superintendent for Fort Ben ISD. I feel it's too rushed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Ms. Hannon, you have another comment?
I just because I know Mr. Rosenthal said he did not recall voting. It was an action item on April 26, 2021. And it says approval of the superintendent search planning meeting summary. So just for your reference.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon.
Can you tell me, Ms. Hannon, I'm just I'm asking because I know I went back and looked at that recently. Can you tell me the date that we were supposed to initially receive candidates?
The seminar for interviews and final stages of search process was supposed to happen today. The slate of applicants was supposed to be presented to Fort Ben ISD today. Board initial interviews were supposed to begin June 11 through the 12. So I I recognize some of this was interfering with, I think, Mr. Rice's things he needed to do at SLI. Because we also had some items on June 12 on this calendar. Board meets identified preferred preferred cap applicants, begin background checks. So it was pretty compressed. Board interviews of preferred candidates the week of June 14, 15, 16, which I understand that's SLI. But anyway, that's I could go on, but it was today. I'm sorry, today is the day.
Today, we were supposed to receive the initial candidates. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that is in the initial. And I know that we had changed that to June 5, which that that small change in a calendar, to me, doesn't reflect a a postponement of a superintendent search. But yes, that is indicated on the calendar we voted on and unanimously voted on.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. I think that we've had a good discussion, excuse me. And we all have different points of view. But I believe we all have one goal, and that is to get a good superintendent. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion that we meet with Hazard, Young, and Ataya on June 14 for the purpose of coming up with a revised schedule of a superintendent search and to move forward in that manner. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? We have, I understand we have an issue with our voting machine, so we will need to vote by a show of hands, if you would. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have four in favor, all opposed, and three opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosenthal, are you going to continue to lead the meeting at this time? Or are you going to drop off?
I need to drop off. Sorry, folks.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we will consider, we will review our board agenda at this time. Ms. Saavedra, would you please lead us through this with a review of items, beginning with the review 5A1?
Right, Mr. Mr. Gwen, can you lead us in the conversation about the final budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Has my mic on? Okay, good. Thank you. This is the final budget amendment for the 2020-21 school year. This is a routine item that is brought to the board each June to basically bring each function into budget. There was a question that did come from a board member as to whether or not we would be removing the virtual school program with this budget amendment. And the response to that is no, we will not, because the virtual school is actually in the 21-22 budget. It is not included in the 2021 budget. We anticipate we will bring forward a budget amendment in September that would amend the 21-22 school budget to remove those expenditures based on actions taken by the state. So again, this is a routine item that is brought to the board for consideration that essentially balances all of the functions within the budget. As a reminder for the board that we are on a July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. And so again, this is the final budget amendment for the year that brings each function into balance based on the information we present to the board as part of the budget.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gwen? Okay. Next item.
The next item is the fund balance resolution. And this is where we are recommending to the board how we commit the fund balance for the end of the year. You will notice that there are a number of items on here. The first one I would point out is our major maintenance and repair. Each year, the district recommend our staff recommends setting aside $6.4 million in our designated fund balance for any type of major damage or any type of major repairs that need to occur throughout the school year that may be outside of the scope of our bond. And so this reestablishes those funds from the ending at 531, from $5.8 million to $6.4 million, essentially resetting those funds back to what they were at the beginning of the previous school year. The loss of state revenue, I'm sorry, the campus activity funds, you'll note that that is to be determined. This number will be finalized once the final audit is completed. And we have the year-end fund balances for each of the activity funds, so that number will be reflective of what each of those individual funds have. The loss of state revenue is setting aside 25%, I'm sorry, it's part of our set aside of 25%. This represents 30 days of operating reserve. You'll recall that we have to have a 90-day fund balance reserve. This represents 30 days of that 90-day requirement. The new schools allotment, this is for the opening of new campuses. This allows us to purchase any instructional instructional materials that are outside the scope of the bond. And this is ensuring that those funds are available as we move forward with opening new schools. The instructional materials allotment, that was set aside this year specifically for a new textbook allot or adoption, rather. And it is not anticipated that we will need to utilize those funds next year based on the fact that the adoption is limited. So we expended the funds this year. And again, next year, we're not anticipating any of those funds. The final item on there is that related specifically to this year is economic stabilization. And because of the pandemic, we did utilize fully all of those funds. And because the fund balance is at 90 days, we do not have capacity to set aside additional funds. And just as a reminder on this, this $15 million was over and above our existing 90-day fund balance requirement. So we will still be within 90 days without having that $15 million. This was just additional funds in the event some unforeseen event happened. And of course, the pandemic happened, and thankfully, we did have those funds available. The final item that is on here is for Elementary 54. This elementary will be part of a future bond election. If that bond election is not successful, then we would have to have a funding source for that particular school. And so we are designating fund balance within the general fund in the event that that bond election is not successful. If the bond election is successful, and then then those expenditures would be reallocated over to the bond fund, and the general fund would release those funds that have been set aside for that campus. But again, this is in the event that that bond is not successful. We had consultation with our financial auditor, Whitley Penn, and this is their recommended path forward related to those funds. And I believe that concludes the items that are there. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Ms. Hannon?
Mr. Gwen, remind me when the potential bond would be?
We will be bringing forward the proposed timeline for that. Currently, there are two dates that are being proposed, May 2022 or November 2022. So it would be potentially next year if the board authorizes that action.
So potentially in the coming spring of this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's just right around the corner, isn't it? That's soon. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gwen? Mr. Gwen, I have a question. Allocating the $32 million for Elementary School 54, what will our fund balance be?
Well, our fund balance will remain the same, but we are designating these funds specifically for that school. It just means that they would not be specifically available for other uses other than this campus. We would have to come back to the board to undesignate them, if you will, to utilize them for other purposes.
I see. And so we do this so that when if and when we call for a bond in May or November, and it passes, then we can repay the general fund from the bond proceeds.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. What is our next item? Oh, review approval of previous minutes? Do we have any comments or questions? Ms. Hannon?
I made some suggestions. Mr. Rosier got those. Thank you, Mr. Rosier.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to go over 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E, and 3F. And now we're moving on to review item 5B1. Ms. Saavedra?
This has to do with CPR training and graduates and applying for a waiver with TEA?
Any questions for Ms. Saavedra on the waiver for CPR? Very well. Moving on to 5C1. Oh, that's the same. What is 5C1?
The purchase of hotspots.
Any questions on 5C1? That's on page 54.
I think Ms. Hannon has a question.
Ms. Hannon, do you have a question on that?
Yes, I do. So I I asked about hotspots because I believe we said there were going to be limited access through the libraries. Is that correct? And that those would only be available to students for two weeks because we are trying to push out some free internet access to to families that meet the eligibility requirements. Am I understanding that?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. We will be putting the hotspot, the limited number of hotspot in the lending library at each campus, pending on funding, of course. And we will be making efforts to get the words out on a federal program that makes it available for family who are qualified for two years, free internet, high-speed internet access. And we have already started the communication on that.
Okay, are we? Well, I mean, I guess there's no real way we can track to see which families take advantage of that, correct? Okay, so I just I think I would hope that we would consider some families may not take advantage of that and will need access to hotspots. I'm assuming we already have some that we purchased this year?
The hotspot itself has already been purchased. That means that we don't have to pay for them. It is the services that we have to activate.
To continue to continue that?
That is correct.
And so just to clarify, about how many students access that this year, the hotspots?
To date, we handed out about 4,100 hotspot and
4,100?
That's correct.
They kept those throughout the year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we so we have quite a good number?
Yes, ma'am.
So if a child needed it for more than two weeks, we may be able to to provide them that?
We will have to evaluate because it is based on funding. It's $35 a month for each one of the activation.
Okay, okay, I see. So each of the hotspots is costing the district $75?
$35 a month.
How much?
$35 a month.
$35 a month. Okay, we just, you know, the digital vibe? We just, you know, the digital vibe is real.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we want to make sure all of our kids have access to what they need.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. Yes, Ms. Malone.
One thing I noticed was that the data plans offer the ability to suspend data and billing on hotspots not being utilized. What timeframe is that to where the billing will suspend if not being utilized?
Immediately. Whenever we let them know which hotspot is not using the data, we suspend the data on the hotspot.
Well, then what timeframe do you evaluate that there's lack of use?
It's depend on the need when they are requesting. So first, what we're going to try to do is to, to get our families who are qualified, make sure that they get the federal government program that provide them with high-speed internet access for free. Secondly, what we're going to do is we also have for Marshall and I do believe Willer Ridge is qualified for the Verizon hotspot. And so we are going to rely on that if we can get all of our, I guess, paperwork in, make sure that that's available. Well, some, three of our schools, I think McAuliffe, Missouri City, and Lake Olympia, no, I'm not sorry, Hodges Bend.
Hodges Bend.
Hodges Bend are, have the Verizon one-to-one. And so those schools are taken care of. The rest of them, we're going to have to look at the requirement in terms of demands. If they do need them and they need more than two weeks, then we have to evaluate at the time.
Okay, thank you.
And we can turn the, these data on, off as we need it to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Any other questions? Moving on to 5C1B, purchase of cheerleader and dance uniforms. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Williams.
My question is, I'm confused on that item. Are we purchasing uniforms for every cheerleader or how is the money getting to the campuses?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Williams. This is for cheerleaders that are newly selected. So anyone who is new to cheerleading receives a uniform at the secondary campuses.
At the secondary campuses? New cheerleaders, how about the dance team?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase the question?
You stated cheerleaders. I'm asking you about the dance team. I'm asking you about the flat core. I'm asking you about the band. Since you're stating that those are the entities that are being assisted with this money.
Yes, ma'am, this is for dance and cheerleaders. I have Mr. Drew online if you'd like more clarity. Mr. Drew? Mr. Drew, I believe you're muted.
Mr. Drew, we still can't hear you.
Mr. Drew, if you can go to the...
Not hearing you, sir.
Devices and choose the NUTA mic source.
No, we still cannot hear you, Mr. Drew.
We cannot hear you, Mr. Drew.
Ms. Williams, can we get you more information on that tomorrow? We're having some...
Yes, but I, okay, right, okay, that's understandable. But I was, I was, and the reason for my question is I've spoken with cheerleaders and it doesn't seem like the uniforms have been purchased for them. I'm hearing about fundraisers for uniforms, talking to little girls who don't try out because they can't even afford the uniforms. So I'm going to request that I get a printout of some type of ledger because I need to know how many uniforms you bought for Ridge Point, High Tower, Elkins, Lake Olympia, et cetera. Because I'm seeing Title I funding being, being, being spent on uniforms. And I had one person call me and say, Ms. Williams, are campuses allowed to use Title I funding for dance uniforms? I'm like, no, we can't do that. But I'm, I'm seeing that you have money here. And it seems like the district should have been providing those, those dance team uniforms. So, Mr. Drew, I'm going to wait on you to get that information to me. But I am very curious as to how this money has been spent in the past.
Yes, Ms. Williams, we'll get you that information. Ms. Scott, Ms. Dina Scott may, may also be able to assist us with that, the athletic director. I know that there is a standard set of uniforms that the district purchases for cheerleaders and dance team. There may be purchases outside of the standard uniform that we provide as a district that some of the dance teams or cheerleading squads buy above and beyond, but we can certainly provide you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next item is 51C, review purchase of supplemental instructional resources. Any questions on that one? 5C1D, review purchase of a contract increase for sheet music. Ms. Hannon?
I want to thank Mr. Drew and his department for providing the response to my question regarding sheet music and, and the additional information about fine arts. But if, if there is a possibility we could add, there's a fine arts budget allocation that was sent in the board memo today. Could we, could I, could we see, could the board see how that is broken down by fine arts program? Performing arts, visual arts? That, that would be helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. Any other questions? We will move on to 5C1E, review purchase of career and technical education programs. Do we have any questions? Move, moving on to 5C1F, review purchase of campus fitness programs.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, may, may we go back to the CTE question?
Yes.
For the CTE item?
Yes.
Thank you for the, for the response to that as well. I just, I want to be clear in that cosmetology and automotive and welding are the only three programs that we're asking students to provide outside expenditures on from their, from their own funding?
Ms. Wadasek, thank you.
The three programs that you listed, Ms. Hannon, are asked to purchase safety equipment. However, they're supplied with the opportunity to have equipment first and they have to request access to how to purchase it. So we issue them a safety piece and then they, they can request permission to buy it on their own if they would prefer. That is a change from how we've done it in the past for next school year.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Malone.
Yes, so over five years, it looks like it's roughly $2 million a year on average. And then some, but I'm just curious with CTE having so many different programs, how exactly those funds are allocated and divvied out, divvied out per program and if we could get a little more detail?
Sure. In the RFP, when we are requesting this type of information, what we're looking for is to add vendors so that we can purchase from them. Our current list of vendors is very narrow for who we can purchase from, from a CTE perspective. And so over time, it will change depending on how the programs expand. So one year, we might be spending, I'll give you this year's example. We replenished the business computers at the high school level. So a large chunk of that money was spent on business refresh this year. We have a five-year cycle plan that is a refresh for all programs. Each campus teacher, if you will, or program will get an allocation that they, they get to deal with on what they would like. But from a refresh cycle, we're on a five-year refresh cycle plan and we can provide that for you.
That would be great. Thank you.
And I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
As it relates to students purchasing equipment, why would a student need to purchase equipment to attend the CTE program? Maybe I missed that part.
Students don't purchase equipment. Equipment is generally what we own as a school district. A student might be, have the option to purchase goggles, safety goggles, for example, in the welding lab. Again, in the past, they were asked to purchase those, but they could apply for assistance. That is not how we're doing it in the future. They are issued a school-owned piece and they have to ask for permission to buy it on their own if they would like to move that direction. So they do not purchase...
Is it possible? Okay, so what I need for you to do, I need you to break that down to me, how we're going to put it in policy. I don't, I don't want a skirt, I want the facts. In the past, Fort Bend ISD has been charging students for supplies to attend the CTE program. Since such time, Fort Bend ISD has ceased those unauthorized practices. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
There are teachers that ask students to buy school supply items such as glue and poster board. That will not change as that is standard for if I have a, an equipment list for kindergarten, for my kid entering kindergarten. From the perspective of students being asked to buy uniforms, Ms. Williams, and then things like their cosmetology kits that Ms. Hannon was referring to, that is what we have changed and it is not a policy, it is a procedure. There is currently not a district policy written on how that is handled, but we do have procedures internally that we can provide for you.
No, but it is a state law. And the state law states that if that student receives free and reduced lunch, they shouldn't pay for it. So the state law supersedes any policy that the prior board of trustees may have put in place. But what I need you to hear from me, and I don't intend to go into July and August beating the same horse, I do not want to hear any student who is receiving free and reduced lunch paying for any item. I'm talking about glue, whatever it's need for that student to be successful in CTE, the responsibility lies with the district. That's the law. So in reference to supplies in kindergarten, again, I'm not going into July and August beating this horse that I have been beaten for two years prior to being elected. You guys at CTE must come into compliance with the law. Whatever this $2 million is, I'm going to spend the rest of the night dissecting it. I expect on the next meeting, I need to have answers and I need something in writing to state that these students will not be charged one penny if they receive free and reduced lunch. Texas Education Code, Chapter 11, Section 1162. And I'm not reading that, I know it by heart because I fought this fight for too long.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor, I mean, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any, any further comment, Ms. Wadasek? All right, thank you very much. Dr. Indelacano?
Yes, sir, we'll follow up. We have public-facing procedures as well and we'll make sure with communication appearance that this is well coordinated and communicated with those students at the CTE center.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is 5C1F, review purchase of campus fitness programs. Ms. Hannon?
For any board members who are not aware of Kickstart programs in Fort Bend ISD, I just want to say what an amazing program this is. And a question that I have is in the, the board packet we have that when the middle school 16 opens, the Kickstart program and 20, they're recommending that, that that campus have a Kickstart program. Is the design of that building already complete? Has that building been designed?
Yes, ma'am, it is under design. It's just about complete.
Okay, and there, the kick, there is a Kickstart designated space where that, that campus would have adequate access per child for the square foot per child that they need for that program?
I need to check and get back with you.
Okay, I think that would be very important and I appreciate whoever gave me the information that I asked on, on a couple of different Kickstart programs. And I would ask that, I'm not sure if it's Ms. Scott or who, who would look at that, but, but I do think that it's important that those kids and the masters that are over those programs have equitable space to provide because it's an amazing program. And if we can expand that program so that not a single middle school child who wants that program is denied, I think it is very important. It's an amazing, not only physical activity, but a wonderful social, emotional program that supports the students. And I just, I really wanted to take some time out. And so I appreciate every Kickstart instructor throughout this, this district. And I have never spoken to a parent who has said one ill word about Kickstart because it's an amazing, amazing program. Thank you.
I would absolutely agree. Lori Sartain is our coordinator who heads that up, or assistant director, I should say, who heads that up. She does an amazing job and she provided the information for you. But I would concur that that is an amazing program. It's wonderful for middle school students. When I was a middle school principal, that was something that I highly advocated for. And it really provides a sense of belonging and an itch for, for students, so.
But they can't, they can't do the program service if they don't have room for the kids to, to do that. And, and just the two samples, we could clearly see the discrepancy in, in space provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. Our next item is 5C1G, review purchase of school nurse electronic health record software system. Our next item is 5C1H, review purchase of nursing services. Our next item is 5C1I, review purchase of temporary staffing services. Our next item is 5C1J, review purchase of district device repair services. Our next item is 5C1K, review purchase of Zoom video conferencing technology products and services. Ms. Malone?
What is the, I understand we use Teams and we already own and have the Microsoft software platform. So what is the advantage of adding Zoom?
The advantage is for the campuses to have a larger venue. Team is limited to 250 attendees. Also, the Zoom allows our campuses to subdivide the breakout room much easier than, say, Teams where it's pre-arranged.
Thank you.
Ms. Hannon? Oh, no, okay. Our next item is 5C1L, review purchase of an identity automation management system. Our next item is 5C1M, review purchase of data center infrastructure and related services. Our next item is 5C1M, review purchase of data center infrastructure and related services. Our next item is 5C1N, review purchase of fire protection system inspections. Next item is 5C1O, review purchase of security camera maintenance. Our next item is 5C1P, review purchase of fencing services, equipment, and related Our next item is 5C1Q, review purchase of a heavy-duty tow wrecker. Our next item is 5D1, the 2018 bond program, review the easement with CenterPoint Energy to provide electrical services to Almeda Crawford High School. Our next item is 5D2, review access easement agreement with Sienna Municipal Utility District 6 for Elementary School 54. Our next item is 5D3, review sanitary sewer easement agreement with Sienna Municipal Utility District 6. Our next item is 5D5, review waterline easement agreement with Sienna Municipal Utility District Our next item is 5D6, review project budget for Elementary School 54 and review construction services agreement with Drumala Construction Company. I believe that those are all of the items we have to review at this time. Ms. Ayahadra, do we have any audience responses to agenda items posted for this meeting?
No, sir.
In that case, I shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. And...
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. We are adjourned.